Would the clerk please call the roll?
Wilson?
Here.
Fahey here, Kimball?
Here.
Mullen?
Here.
Newberg?
Here.
Newmaster and Chapman are absent.
Right, could you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have before us an agenda for this evening's meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Mullen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Right, we have an agenda. We also have in front of us a consent agenda, which consists of a number of routine items, which are before the board every month. Included in the consent agenda, though, is always a resolution to accept gifts made to the school district in the previous month. This month is no exception. We have, probably the only exception, is we have pages of gifts made to the district in the previous month. We have donations by local PTAs, including PTAs for Vadness Heights and Lincoln Elementary to support operations in their schools. We have donations by a number of individuals to support our senior programming and Meals on Wheels. And then we have, one after another, of individuals or entities that have donated to support scholarships given to our graduating seniors and students in the last month. And we appreciate that greatly. So, having said that, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fahey. This does call for a roll call vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Fahey, aye. Kimball?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newberg?
Aye.
Right, the consent agenda carries. Now is the time for public forum. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on any issues of interest or concern to them. We do ask individuals who want to speak to the board to fill out a card, which is located on the table over to the attendees' right, and bring it up to the dais ahead of time. I don't see any cards this evening. Is there anybody here who would like to address the board? All right, seeing none, we will turn to our one and only information item, and that is C1, the superintendent's report from our brand-new superintendent of schools, Dr. Wayne Kasmercheck. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Welcome, cabinet, and a couple other guests, but beautiful July night, we have a sparsely populated boardroom. I'm excited to be here, very excited to be the next superintendent of White Bear Lake Schools, look forward to working with you all, and as well as my cabinet colleagues, as we continue the great work that has been going on here for many years. And I'm excited also to be a parent of children in the school system, and again, just thankful and appreciative of the opportunity. So, Market Fest continues. We have, from 6:00 to 9:00 on Thursday nights through July 27th. This past week, I was able to meet quite a few people, and hopefully, if you're out at Market Fest, you'll stop by and say hi on Thursday night. We have pencils, tattoos, kids' games, and a lot of information to share. And they, again, they've been well-attended, and thank you to staff members who have been working at the booth for the district and doing a great job representing us. Our buildings are very busy in the summer, so while summertime is thought to be a time of rest and relaxation, we have a lot of activity, a lot of students, a lot of staff are very busy with sport camps, art lessons, enrichment classes, as well as our extended school year program for qualified students on individual education plans. Those students are taking part in programming at Otter Lake and at South Campus. We have our general ed summer school program. Elementary students are at Birch Lake and at Lincoln, and students in grades 5 through 8 are at Central Middle School. Our ALC wrapped up a three-week credit recovery program last week, and community ed is busy as usual with extended date programming and our playground program. The community auditorium is seeing quite a bit of activity these days as well, with students and alumni busy rehearsing for Bonnie and Clyde, a PG-13 production that will be performed July 21st and 22nd, and '27 through '29. Information and online tickets are available at the district's website. We have students involved outside of our school buildings as well. We have our pathways exploration activities. We've got four distinct career pathways happening in the district. We have construction, healthcare, manufacturing, and information technology. Our healthcare and manufacturing pathways, activities were highlighted recently in the White Bear Press, and I believe there will be a couple more articles in the press in subsequent weeks. Additionally, the district will host a one-day construction camp on August 2nd for students going into 7th through 9th grades. Additional information is available on the district's website. And our student recognitions, so our recognitions look a little different this month, with a busy summer for students. We are changing the process a bit, but the honor is still a special one. Students in ultimate frisbee and girls' golf will soon receive a certificate from the school board in honor of their state-level accomplishments, along with a White Bear Boys' golfer who made it to state. Congratulations, students.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kasmercheck. Good job on your first superintendent's report.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have no discussion items tonight, so we'll turn to our first operational item, E1, action on the operating levy renewal parameters. Dr. Kasmercheck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Earlier today, we had a work-study meeting at which we discussed our operating levy renewal parameters. And so what you see here is reflective of that conversation. And we can go back further than that. We've had several school board meetings where we've talked about the operating levy renewal that we will pursue here this coming November. And the discussion this afternoon centered on four key parameters, the first of which is the amount per pupil. So the amount, the amount you see, the $1,545.31 per pupil, that's our existing operating levy, that's what we have in place now. So that would be the amount that we would be requesting. We currently have an annual inflation factor included in our operating levy, and we will seek to continue that. So each year, it's adjusted modestly based on the inflation rate that's determined and given to school districts by the Minnesota Department of Education. Our length of levy, the recommendation is for 10 years. We currently have a operating levy in place for six. And again, at our board work-study today, we discussed reasons for going to a 10-year term, so that's the recommendation tonight. And there is the tax impact, there's no tax increase, we're asking for the same amount of money that we're receiving currently, so there would be no tax impact. So taxpayers would not see an increase based on this recommendation. So those are the four key parameters. And the way it'll work going forward is on August 14th, at our regular board meeting, we would call the election, and at that meeting, we'll have all of the legal documents prepared and ready for you as a board to review prior to approving and calling the election. But these will be the parameters that we worked into those documents over the next few weeks.
Right, thank you, Dr. Kasmercheck. Well, we have a recommendation that we authorize district administration to finalize preparations for calling the election for an operating levy renewal with the following parameters: $1,545.31 per pupil for 10 years with an annual inflationary adjustment. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kimball. I know we just discussed this at our work-study meeting, does anyone have any additional questions for Dr. Kasmercheck or any discussion? Right, seeing none, this calls for a roll call vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Fahey, aye. Kimball?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newberg?
Aye.
The motion carries. We'll turn to our next operational item, E2, and that is action on the 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan. Dr. Kasmercheck.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mr. Roser is here, so if you could be ready perhaps, if there are questions about specifics on the plan. And Mr. Wald, too, is here as well. And I know Dan and Tim worked on this last week. So this is an annual approval item. Minnesota school districts take part in a program called the Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Revenue Program. And each year, districts are required to update a 10-year facilities plan. And as we've shared before, the first two or three years are usually pretty solid in terms of what projects are slated, that are scheduled. When you get out to years nine and 10, we often have placeholders and try to anticipate as best we can what might be out there. So the 10-year plan, the initial few years, as you probably noticed, is a little more specific than the latter years. But generally, the Department of Ed wants us to make sure we're planning with a long view in mind. A couple of things about this particular plan. We've worked with our financial advisors, so that at some point in the not-too-distant future, they will be here explaining to you how we're going to fund our projects for the next few years. We currently have, our practice has been, and we're going to do it one more time, where we issue bonds in order to cover the cost of our projects, but we're moving to a pay-as-you-go method instead. And we talked a little bit about this last year at this time, and we decided to wait until this coming fiscal year in order to issue those bonds. But that will be something we talk about this fall. So in the memo, I referenced the issuance of $15 million in long-term facilities maintenance bonds, and then we shift, then we'll shift to a pay-as-you-go. But that $15 million is factored into the financing plan of our next few years of projects, but there will be additional conversation about that in the next few months, as we do some refinancing of some debt, and then also issuance of some new debt to cover long-term facilities maintenance. So with that, there's a lot of detail in the board packet, certainly, I'm not going to go through that extreme amount of detail, but generally, this is an annual approval item that we then send to the Department of Education, and then that authorizes us to move ahead with our revenue plan for funding our long-term facilities maintenance projects.
Thank you, Doctor. We have a recommendation that we approve, the 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan, as Dr. Kasmercheck presented and as identified in our packet. Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval.
Motion by Mr. Kimball, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fahey. Any questions for Dr. Kasmercheck or any discussion? Mr. Kimball?
This discussion, I just want to mention that this certainly seems like a good plan, you know, very much in line with what, not only what we've done and what MDE and organizations like MSBA, AMSD, you know, support, so I think that it's a good idea. And the plan to go, move into a pay-as-you-go is a good move, too, so I just wanted to mention that. You thought you were going to get a question on that, but it's not.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball. Any other questions or discussion? Yes, Mr. Mullen?
I definitely would like to echo Mr. Kimball's comments, but I just have a quick question, so do I do have a question for you. Fiscal year 2026, it talks about turf replacement. Is that full turf replacement, or is that just as needed?
Usually, around that time, it's the top layer of turf is at its replacement cycle, so we're just anticipating, we want to throw it on the plan just to anticipate. Around that time, we've got to be thinking about turf replacement, the top layer.
Okay.
It's under half the price of what we paid to initially put it in.
Perfect, all right.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, this calls for a roll call vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Fahey, aye. Kimball?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newberg?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Roser. Thank you, Dr. Kasmercheck. We'll now turn to Operation Item E3, which is action to designate an identified official with authority for the MDE External User Access Recertification System. Dr. Kasmercheck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is an annual approval item required by the Department of Education. In previous years, we had designated three of us internally to act as identified officials with authority. In conversation with Department of Ed staff, they've recommended going a different direction and sticking with the superintendent, and then also encouraged just to add Jody, for Jody Reber, my assistant, so that she's able to add and remove names, so that we're able to react more timely to requests that come from the Department of Ed. So if you recall from previous years, this particular recommendation is a little bit different from previous years, and that's based on a recommendation from the Department of Ed. So this is an annual approval item.
Right, thank you, Dr. Kasmercheck. So we have a recommendation that we approve, Wayne Kasmercheck, superintendent, and Jody Reber, executive assistant to the superintendent, to add and remove names only, as White Bear Lake area schools identified official with authority as required by the Minnesota Department of Education. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Mullen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. Any questions for Dr. Kasmercheck? Right, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We'll turn to our next operation item, E4, and that is action on a 2017-2018 resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League. Dr. Kasmercheck.
I thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is, again, another annual approval item. This is, this is just, gets White Bear Lake, renews White Bear Lake's membership in the Minnesota State High School League.
Right, thank you. We have a recommendation that we renew our membership in the Minnesota State High School League for 2017 to 2018. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Mullen. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? That motion carries. We'll turn to E5, action on updating official depositories for the school district's funds and authorized bank accounts and signatures. Dr. Kasmercheck, once again.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. So this is a, this is an annual, annual item, and when we have changes in key staff who need to be added as people who may sign on different bank accounts, so we need to update this with the change in staff, so there's been some turnover, including myself and Mr. Wald, and that's the primary changes for now. But that gets us lined up on the South Campus change, that gets us lined up for now. There will likely be another agenda item like this next month, when we do some additional hiring, as we have a couple of other vacancies that will impact this list. So this is one of those things, and it's typically annual, but it may be more frequent if there are changes in administrators.
Thank you, Dr. Kasmercheck. We have a recommendation that we approve, the official depositories for school district funds and authorized bank accounts and signatures for this fiscal year, July 1, 2017 to, actually, it's only half of a year, to January 8, 2018. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Mullen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kimball. Any questions for Dr. Kasmercheck about this? Yes, Mr. Wilson?
Although it is a six-month agreement, typically, we can go back when Mary retires and make an adjustment at that point.
Right, not a major adjustment, we'll make in a month, most likely.
Yeah, next month, probably.
Yep. And this was, there was discussion with our auditor, if we recall, this was one of the questions that came up at the board meeting, what, you know, what do we do when we have a turnover in staff? And there was follow-up with him, and he recommended that we go ahead and make those changes at the next board meeting when we know of a vacancy. So that's why you'll see this more frequently going forward.
And the reason this goes only till January 8th is, January 8th is the board's reorganization meeting for the next calendar year. All right, any other questions for Dr. Kasmercheck? All right, seeing none, we have a motion and a second. This does involve money, so let's have a roll call vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Fahey, aye. Kimball?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newberg?
Aye.
The motion carries. We'll turn to E6, and that is action on appointment of compliance officers. Dr. Kasmercheck.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. This is, again, a, typically, an annual approval item, but with a change in staff, we're bringing it to you earlier than what we'd normally. So Mr. Mitch Cooper is now our Director of Human Resources, replacing Linda Gores, who is retiring at the end of the month. And so again, this is, this just gets us in line with who our current staff member is, who would be our compliance officer going forward.
Thank you. So we have a recommendation that we approve, the appointment of Mitch Cooper, Director of Human Resources, as the district's Human Rights Officer, replacing Linda Gores. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Mullen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, we have a new district Human Rights Officer. Congratulations, Mr. Cooper. We'll turn to our next item, E7, and that is action on approving non-affiliated contracts for 2017-2018. Welcome, Ms. Gores, I thought this was going to be a Dr. Kasmercheck-all-the-time night. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kasmercheck. You have before you a proposal for our non-affiliated employee group, and that is a group of approximately 50 employees that aren't associated with any union throughout the district, and also not certified with the Bureau of Mediation Services. So as they're, they're at-will employee, but their agreement for what we're going to pay them ended in the June, so we would like to propose that a 2% increase in salary for these employees. We haven't quite figured out what the district contribution toward health insurance will be yet, but they would have that adjustment as well when that's determined.
Thank you, Ms. Gores. So we have a recommendation that we approve, the proposed salaries and/or salary rates for the district's non-affiliated employees, as Ms. Gores outlined. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kimball. Any questions for Ms. Gores regarding this? All right, seeing none, this calls for a roll call vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Fahey, aye. Kimball?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newberg?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Gores. Action Item E8, and that is action on approving cabinet contracts for 2017-2018. Dr. Kasmercheck.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Similar to what Ms. Gores just reviewed with you, these are cabinet member contracts, these are one-year contracts for the following positions. Actually, the cabinet is, consists of this, these positions, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. I'll mention that Mr. Wald's contract was approved in June, because he was a new hire, so you're not taking action on that one tonight. Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, Director of Human Resources, again, Mr. Cooper, you acted upon his contract in June, so you're not acting on his tonight. Director of Student Support Services, Director of Community Services and Recreation, Director of Communications and Community Relations, and the Director of Technology and Innovation. And in closed session earlier, we talked about the changes that were made to the contracts. Generally, it was a 2% increase, the insurance will be adjusted once that amount is determined. The insurance, our insurance changes, January 1, if you recall, that's not, that's not a fiscal year, that's a calendar year change, so that's why we have a little bit of time with that. Generally, that, those were the, those were the primary changes to the contract. There was one contract that was, there was a step advancement was included, just due to the relative newness of the person in that position, giving them an opportunity to advance. So, but generally, it was a 2% increase, just like the previous group, or the collection of employees.
Right, thank you, Dr. Kasmercheck. This item bears a resolution, so I will ask the clerk to read the resolution into the record.
Let the school board approve the one-year 2017-2018 individual contracts for cabinet positions to include Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, Director of Student Support Services, Director of Community Services and Recreation, Director of Communications and Community Relations, and Director of Technology and Innovation.
Thank you, Ms. Fahey. We have a resolution that has been read into the record by Ms. Fahey. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Mullen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fahey. Any questions for Dr. Kasmercheck regarding these contracts? All right, this calls for a roll call vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Fahey, aye. Kimball?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newberg?
Aye.
The resolution carries. We'll turn to Action Item E9, and that is a second reading of three school board policies. The district has a number of policies that govern its operation. From time to time, we require new policies to be developed. When either existing policies are modified or proposed for modification, or we need new policies, administration works on that and brings the policies to the policy committee for analysis. Once the policy committee comes to a format that they believe the board should consider as a whole, they bring it to the board for first reading. The three policies that are on our agenda tonight were all brought to the board last month, when I was not here, for first reading. Once the policy is clear first reading, they generally come back to the board in the ensuing month for the second reading, which is our opportunity to approve them, and that's why these three are here today. So I would recommend that we entertain a motion in one fell swoop to approve all three school board policies. They are Policy 202, School Board Officers, Policy 210, Conflict of Interest, School Board Member, and Policy 402, Disability and Non-Discrimination Policy. Is there a motion to approve all three policies?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kimball, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Mullen. I know you had an opportunity to discuss these at last month's meeting, are there any additional questions or discussion regarding these? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? That motion carries. Our last action item is E10, and that's action on a tentative agreement for a two-year contract with our confidential employee group. Ms. Gores?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kasmercheck. This tentative agreement that we have with our confidential employees are our employees that, under the Public Employee Labor Relations Act, that we're all governed by in Minnesota, identifies this group of employees as having to be separate from other bargaining units because of the information that they have regarding negotiations. So these are the administrative assistant to the superintendent, our human resource folks, payroll, and administrative assistant to the assistant superintendent. So the terms and the conditions are very similar to the other ones that you've approved tonight, with a 2% increase, some slight increases to insurance that will also be finalized with some of the other information that will be determined, and just a few other minor adjustments.
Very good, thank you. We have a resolution in connection with this matter, so I will ask the clerk to read the resolution into the record.
Whereas the parties have reached a tentative agreement on the 2017-19 contract, whereas the group has ratified the contract, then be it hereby resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 624 approves the 2017-2019 agreement and authorizes the chair and clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the school board.
All right, is there a motion to approve the resolution as read into the record by the clerk?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Mullen. Are there any questions for Ms. Gores regarding this contract? All right, this calls for a roll call vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Fahey, aye. Kimball?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newberg?
Aye.
The resolution carries. Thank you, Ms. Gores. And now, we are in record time at Board Forum, which is an opportunity for board members to share any information about upcoming events or anything else for the good of the order. Does anyone have anything for Board Forum tonight? I know I have a short item, but...
I do.
Mr. Kimball, go ahead.
I have, like, five things. So the first one is, good job, Dr. Kasmercheck, on your first meeting, you were very adequate. And congratulations.
High praise.
Well, we're Minnesota. Yeah. And I didn't realize, I mean, I sat next to the superintendent tonight, and that meant that I was partially on camera quite a bit, and I'm not used to that, but I was, you know, I got a haircut last night, and so I think I felt I was in good shape there. If there are any potential school board members who are thinking about, or who have filed to run in the audience or viewing, you'll never have a meeting this short, so don't think that this is the norm. Usually, they're pretty long. Just want to mention, welcome, Mr. Cooper, and say goodbye to Linda Gores. Thank you for great service. I think this is your last meeting, right? Welcome, Tim Wald, to your new position. And, you know, I look at, we have new people on cabinet, and that means that a couple of these guys are sort of like veterans now. That's a little scary to think about. But also, in the agenda today, there's not a lot of new hires, but there are new hires as we fill in staffing for the 2017-18 year. And I know that it's in their contract that they have to watch the meeting where they get hired, so we want to welcome all of you to our district, and thank you for choosing us, and we're so happy to have you. Enjoy the rest of the summer. I'm pretty sure Dr. Lovett is going to watch this, just to make sure that we somehow pulled it off without him here. So hello, Dr. Lovett. Hope you're enjoying yourself not being at the meeting. And then just to all of the students who are watching this on cable, and to their parents, have a good summer. Find a way to do something worthwhile in terms of learning something, but while having fun, which is kind of what it's all about, anyway.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kimball. I have something briefly. As you know, White Bear Lake is one of the member districts of intermediate District 916, which among other things provides special services to kids with special needs. They are opening a brand-new K-8 facility. They will be open for business and enrolling students in September. But the news for everybody tonight is they're having an open house at this beautiful new facility. It's called the Pankalo Education Center. It will be August 1st. Special invitees, and that includes board members and staff, can attend the open house from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on August 1st. Members of the public are invited to attend from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. You know, this is the second K-8 facility 916 has opened or is opening since I've been on the board. And they put together beautiful buildings which meet every single one of the special needs of so many of our kids serviced by our special services department. Thank you, Kathleen Daniels. So I urge you to go out to Pankalo. The address is 8568 Eagle Point Boulevard in Lake Elmo, Minnesota. Mr. Seaver, did you have a question or comment?
Madam Chair, we have a guest Boy Scout in our audience tonight. Would you like to introduce himself?
Yes. We have, I don't know if the microphone picked that up. We have a guest Boy Scout who would like to introduce himself. Come on up to the microphone, young man. He looks thrilled to be coming up to the microphone.
Hello, my name is Wyatt Fish. I'm a Boy Scout in Troop 151 out of Higal.
Well, it's a pleasure to meet you. Did you enjoy the meeting tonight?
[laughing]
The record should reflect, there was a very tentative little nod. Well, thank you, we enjoyed having you here tonight.
I think he enjoyed being at Cup and Cone before the meeting more than being at the meeting.
All right, anything further? Seeing nothing, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, before I make that motion, I would just like to reiterate Mr. Kimball's acknowledgement of Dr. Kazmicek's performance on his first school board meeting. I will say, great job on coming out of the chute on your first rodeo. So with that, I will move to adjourn.
And I second that. We are adjourned. I won.
Yeah, you did. Were you... [inaudible][1793.53]